When it's Zen Hafadeh, Totos Hamzas, this hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam Build Up, Maganha Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications and Technology is called to order. The time is 4:01 PM for the record and in accordance with 5 GCA, Chapter 8, Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent on Friday, February 26, 2021, adhering to the five-day notice and the second public notice on Thursday, March 4, 2021, 48, the 48 hours prior. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website, www.guamlegislature.com. I'm going to share with everyone written testimonies, may be submitted by emailing Senator Munia Barnes at guamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver to our office at 163 Chalan Santa Papa, Guam 10. Colleagues and ladies and gentlemen, on the agenda, we have the appointment of Catherine T. E. Titinal to serve as a member, the government classified service representative of the government of Guam's Retirement Fund Board of Directors. And the second appointment is the appointment of Jeremy N. C. Sepeda to serve as the general member, General Public Representative, Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. Joining me this afternoon, I see on the Zoom link, is Senator Telo Tategui. Sijos Masi for joining us this afternoon. I'd like to thank my colleague for being here. We asked everybody on the Zoom and those testifying to abide by the following: to broadcast from a quiet room with little to no interruptions; to broadcast from a room with adequate lighting specifically to ensure the participant's face is visible and not backlit; to ensure participants' face is visible at all times; to be properly attired and to use only respectful and professional language and conduct. Virtual backgrounds should not be utilized during public hearings. I ask everyone here to keep your audio on mute until you are recognized. Please remain in the waiting room for any questions by my colleagues, and those who do not follow these rules of engagements will be removed from this meeting room. With that being said, we will now move on to the first item on the agenda, and that is the appointment of Catherine T. E. Titinal. And if I'm not mistaken, I do, the appointee is here, but I will note for the record that I will be receiving testimony from the Office of the Retirement, so I don't have anybody here wishing to speak on her behalf. But with that being said, I ask Catherine Titinal to please share your presentation this afternoon with us. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Speaker. Senator Tategui, thank you for having this, hosting this virtual today. I'm going to keep this quite simple. As I've learned from past experience, that brevity is at the heart of good things at times. So, my name is Catherine Titinal. I am an employee of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, and I am the appointed employee representative to the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. I have been serving since 2003. So, I am quite familiar with the interworkings of the fund and have seen quite a few people come and go, but I'm absolutely willing to continue my tenure there for as long as my services are needed.
Okay, thank you very much. That was sweet and thoughtful. And thank you, yes, round of applause. At this time, I might ask my colleague Senator Telo, do you have any comments or questions for Ms. Titinal? Please, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Hafadeh Catherine, thank you for continuing, continuing to serve. You know, it just seemed like not too long ago, you were in front of us on the confirmation hearing, and you're here again. But I do realize things end and, you know, but even though I've had the opportunity to question you during a public hearing, I wanted to make it a point to be here today to thank you for continuing to serve. And being here is to show you that I really appreciate it, and I wanted to thank you for all you're doing there. Since, I mean, we could go back from all, you've seen people come and go, but there is something, I do have a question with regards to on the retirement fund. I've heard that the interest has, I think there's like an interest on the contributions coming into retirement has gone up percentage. I think it was like 26 and now it's 28. Do you know anything about that? And does the board of trustees, do they are, do they have the ability to let the government of Guam, the legislature as well as the administration know the climate of the retirement? Because sometimes when we do the budget and we allocate, or even the agency themselves, and they find out later on that the contribution has gone up. So, it would cost them more not knowing until later on. So, does the retirement office or board make sure they tell these agencies or avail that information as soon as possible to avoid any underfunding to the agency that is due to the retirement fund?
If Senator, the question of contribution, if you're speaking of the government's contribution to the fund, there are different elements to that. One is a fixed figure, which comes with the agreement that we all sign up for when we join, when we join the government of Guam. The other is the unfunded liability question. And that is used, and we do provide access to the legislature, to reports done so that they can, for their budgetary purposes, be able to plan for what that figure is. We give access to our actuary and our actuarial report that provides a projection of what that would be in the coming year. And we do so with consistency. If there are concerns specific to a particular, you know, to this particular year, I don't have it on me at this point, and I would happily look it up for you and get back to you with that.
And Catherine, when does the retirement provide the legislature with what they feel? Okay, you said there's a fixed amount, and that all, you know? And then when do you give them that information?
Well, for example, that fixed amount that I talk about is what we all, it's basically the government match for our, you know, our employment that the retirement fund puts, the employee puts in a piece, and then the employer puts in a piece. It's really the other element that has some movement. And to that, when we give that, when it's in quite a good amount of time in order to assist the, for the budgetary provisions to be worked out at the retirement, excuse me, at the legislature, months ahead.
Is that the unfunded liability section where it kind of, it's not fixed, it fluctuates based on the market? And can you tell me, Catherine, when is that amount foreseeable to give to the legislature? Is it done in July or June during that time?
It's actually projected over the remaining life of the fund. And I'll tell you this, before I even go, I'm going to get, I will get into this, but I will caution you. I love the fact that the retirement board brings different people, and there's diversity to it, because we all bring different strengths to the board. And one of those strengths is going to be the ability to delve into the weeds when it comes to the financials and the reports and the actuarial activities and that sort of thing. As the employee representative, I'm happy to say that I have learned a lot from this board. And with respect to your question, we, those figures, there are, many of those figures are basically reliant on what we see coming back to us as far as the success of our investments are concerned with, you know, on behalf of the, on behalf of the members of the retirement fund, the participants in the fund. And we can see and we have, we provide on a regular basis what we project that to be. And then we do, you know, an analysis on an annual basis when we do give it to the retirement, excuse me, to the legislature to validate and to ensure that we're still on the same track.
Okay. I know it, there is some kind of, you know, it fluctuates, and sometimes agencies are, didn't realize the contribution was needed, more needed, additional funds needed, based on some kind of fluctuation. But yeah, I'm learning too as well, Catherine, and you know, when it comes to these, how they determine what goes to, you know, the old plan and the new plan, and how much the legislature needs to appropriate to be accurate when it comes to the contributions from the government side to retirement. And you definitely don't want to shortchange the retirement whatsoever and to provide a little bit. But I appreciate, you know, your energy toward the retirement, that you're learning every day. It's so important, you know? As soon as you think that you've learned everything, that's a time when you, you know, there's an issue, but...
I joined when I was 10 years into my service with the government of Guam. I will leave as, I will retire very soon. I've spent almost 18 years on the board, so I'm honestly on the verge of that new chapter in life. It is very odd to be here and still be on the fund board, but they've made some amazing accomplishments over the years. And it hasn't always been easy, but it's always been sincere that we intend to represent the best interests of the members of the fund.
And I'll leave that with that, the best interest of the excellent statement. Thank you so much, Catherine, and thank you for stepping on the plate. Please know that my door is always open. If anything I can do to help you, assist you, to help you do your job, okay?
Likewise. In fact, I plan to find a better way to answer your question, even offline.
Please, yes, and please give me a call for that. I appreciate it, okay? Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Senator Tategui. Catherine, thank you so very much for continuing to step up indefinitely, almost two decades, being a part of the board and their continuity to serve our community, to serve our retirees is very admirable and inspirational. And I just want to say that not very often, somebody wants to give a lot of their time, valuable time, to assisting the government. As you know, the livelihoods of our government of Guam employees doesn't stop by working there after they retire even more so, because the benefits that they receive as part of their retirement literally is held in the hands of the board and the team that have been there for many, many decades. So, I want to say, Donkul and Sijos Masi, you've got my support. I will expeditiously try to complete the packet for your appointment for this coming up March session. And I want to say thank you on behalf of us, and hopefully that you'll have many more years to serve and contribute to the retirement board. Colleague, I do know that we have a couple of other folks in the community, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Dakota, if you'd like to share any perspective for Ms. Titinal, or are you both here for Mr. Sepeda?
I'm here for Mr. Sepeda, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, are you here for both or for Mr. Sepeda? Before we start to the next appointee, I will go ahead and recognize the presence in the Zoom of Senator Joanne Brown and Donkul and Sijos Masi for joining us here this afternoon. Colleagues, we just completed the testimony. But before I do that, maybe Senator Brown, Catherine Titinal did her presentation, was very short and brief. She will have almost two decades as the board member to the retirement board. And if you'd like to have a comment or a question to Catherine, I will allow you at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I apologize for being a few minutes late, but I certainly wanted to provide my support to Catherine Titinal. Her and I have known each other for many years. I certainly knew her mom and dad. And we used to meet fairly regularly and run into each other when we were attending University of Hawaii. Gosh, I won't count how many years ago, Catherine, but I certainly wish you well. You know, you've continued your work of public service, just like your mom and dad did for so many, so many, many years. And I know, I know you miss them. I miss talking with them. But I appreciate the fact that all these years later, you still continue to do what you do, and just wanted to let you know you have my support. Thank you very much, Madam Vice Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator. Thank you so very much, Catherine, again, and thank you for presenting yourself at the public hearing today for your appointment. And I want to thank Imaga Haga for sending your name down as part of the retirement board, and again, for your service of almost two decades to the Guam Retirement Board. Sijos Masi, thank you. You're more than welcome to stay for the second appointment, or you may go ahead and key off. That's, I leave that to your purview. Okay, Sijos Masi. Colleagues, next on the agenda is the appointment of Jeremy N. C. Sepeda to serve as a member of the General Public Representative Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. I do know that there are two folks who wish to speak on his behalf. And before I give Jeremy the opportunity to present his testimony, in the interest of time, I will yield to both Mr. Camacho and then Mr. Cruz before I entertain Mr. Sepeda. Mr. Camacho, you were the first one on, so I'll go ahead and recognize you at this time. You can turn on your camera.
What? Hafadeh?
Hafadeh.
I am really pleased to be here today. It's my understanding that Jeremy has been appointed to this board, and I think that he's such a valuable member of our community. You know, I know him as somebody who has taught our language for many years in DOE, has volunteered countless hours to our community in the form of language classes, working with young people, and by researching our language and doing that both by building and maintaining relationships with our Manomku and our Minayna, and also by building relationships with scholars. Jeremy's one of the few people I know that has been published in academic publications without a degree. And I think that that's really beautiful. As somebody with the degree, I don't necessarily think that having a degree makes you smarter. And I think that it is still a marvelous contribution to our community's well-being and knowledge that Jeremy has been able to make. And really, it makes a strong point to how valuable and important our Chamorral knowledge is. And so, I just am really pleased to be here in support of Mr. Sepeda.
Thank you so much, Dakota. Truly appreciate that. I understand that Mr. Adrian Cruz has shared on the chat that he will be submitting written testimony in support of Mr. Sepeda. So, thank you very much, Mr. Cruz. And for the, just to note your title, you are still the deputy, the director of the Department of Agriculture. I'll just note that for the record. Before I ask my colleagues to chime in for Mr. Sepeda and give Mr. Sepeda the opportunity to speak, I will note for the record, from the Guam Public Library System, the director, acting director, Mr. Melvin Wan-Pat Borja has extended and submitted a letter of support for the appointment of Jerry N. C. Sepeda to the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. It says, "When it's Zen Hafadeh, I formally submit this letter in support of the appointment of Jeremy N. C. Sepeda as a general public representative to the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. Jeremy has played a vital role in the preservation and perpetuation of the Chamorral language and culture in our public school system and in various public and private organizations and events. His commitment to this cause and to literacy is of utmost importance to the organization and administration of the Board of Directors. I am pleased to submit my support on his behalf, as I sincerely believe his contributions, talents, motivations can effectuate change and support the organization of the GPLS and can help encourage and bring about support for the GPLS and literacy for the people of Guam." Sijos Masi, Sincere Mente, Melvin Wan-Pat Borja. So, at this time, I will open the floor to Mr. Jeremy Sepeda to give his presentation to us, colleagues. Continue again, what I put for both, Mr. Jeremy.
Hafadeh, Madam Vice Speaker, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Tategui. Then, no hamsu lokui ni mangagipogu ni manega ini na, na hearing. So, men magufo na ma adzikzu kumo representing ni publiko para estina sistema ni librarya gwinigidagwahan. Tagui legnia si senora Titinal gila taf taf nai na molegnia monza nitanakada i hafata sangan sa adzuloku na muna ana, muna ana oki minagahi zani, zani no i minagofta. Wes, i di hokoka malagona malaguzu manazuda. I di libraryha gofin putanti lo atana pogu na kula mama go nyanya hunai i, i kula mama go nyanya hungu. Pogu nagagi si senora Wan-Pat Borja gwi kalan hapongun dididi nai la pogu magmamata. Kululonya pogu gihalum itiampun covid itiampun minalongo. Atana hafabidonya na hanana i famaguni skuela i opportunidad zangin sitama imprinta itzetsonia pa masia hafa manesita sina man malaki librarya za seprimani nazuda. Donkulu enana mina osi zan mina olik edzu, da sijos masi lokui no si senora Wan-Pat zani manautau i librarya ni mangagigi pogu. Malaguzu by azuda muna la la zan muna bibibu ini na senonya i librarya. Sa sina lokui ta na halum nai todu para ikuturata zani lengwahita. Malaguzu lokui parbaikwentusi za by fanaadiskuti nai zani membro ni board. Halftai manu nai sina ta na halum i mafana na ngifino inglesa regional studies. Kululonya gihalum i za Pacificus and Asia zan todu ezi indigenous studies nai sa tagofne sita edzu. Bula gof maolik na ejemplo ni matsotzogi gi readza ni hilu tonu. Da sina u ma azuda he no hafata keke tso gwi gwinigitanota. Waha lokui la megana or waha lokuisia set besu ni matsotzogi. Walokui podi pogu ma keke apunta zo tiugoftungo hafa matsotzogi lo zangin humalu ma zo nai by akonseyo by fanaadiskuti zan adusia. Za ta atan hafa sia na sitbesu ni sina ta na la maolik. Malaguzu lokui na ta fanaafa maolik fanaazu da zani i Guam Museum. Zan todu du adzu na i hensia sia ni, ni matsotzogi tzetukutura zan lengwahi. Sena lokui ta na gwa ha tagui fina, fina programa za tokambida. I adusia ni, you know, man, man mamangip sia poema, ma ngokonta pa masia hafa na klasin fina itzetu ni matsotzogi gi readza. Bula sina tato gwi lo ni sitata fanaetnu na zan za ta atan hafa gwa gwa ha za u, u mafanui he no hafa zan manu nai sina ta umenta za uma na la famta i mina legnia mona, Sijos Masi.
Manpus buen puvetsu, senadozepeda, para de kwentosmu zan todu duz and u, u senti met gut i korasonmu o azuda itata. So, with that being said, I just want to say thank you very much, Jeremy, for stepping up to the plate. More importantly, thank you for having the heart and the vision to come in, though new, to the Board of Directors for the Guam Public Library System. You, as you noted yourself, that it is through the discussions and through the learning and being a part of the board that you will continue to share your experience from what you know in as far as the preservation and the promotion and the advocacy of our people on our island. And truly appreciate you stepping up to the plate and want to thank the governor for sending your nomination down, also for both appointments. And at this time, I know that in the interest of time, we do have the state of the island address, but I will yield to both of my colleagues who've taken the time to come onboard to hear this public hearing today. So, Senator Telo Tategui, I will yield the floor to you first for any comments or questions to the appointee.
Sijos Masi, Madam Chair. When it's Zen Hafadeh, Jeremy. Donkulu sijos masi for stepping up to the plate, continuing to do what you're doing, and that's advocating for our Chamorral culture, our history. And I can't tell you how grateful I am that your idea, you know, my Chamorral is not that good. I'm trying and learning every day. So, I'm pulling the things that you're saying from what you're trying to say. And if I'm not mistaken, you want to continue to bring what is going around in the region, you know, of Guam and incorporating it, bringing it into the library to teach our people, if I'm not mistaken, if that's what I got from what you were saying. But, you know, I have no doubt in my mind that whatever you do, you do it for the preservation of our culture and our history. I know that, we all know that. And I really gratefully appreciate you speaking Chamorral. And believe me, that some of the other stuff you said, I'll be asking one of my staff who's fluent in Chamorral, who's going to tell me the rest of the things that you said, but I'm catbitten pieces and trying to form it together. But I've known you, Jeremy, for some time. I met you through, you know, C. Iriartí, Mr. Iriartí, he introduced us. And I know you have a good heart, and you're a good person, and I greatly appreciate. And I'm here, if you need me as well, my door is always open as well, if there's anything I can do to help you do what you're doing today. So, Donkulu sijos masi, and thank you.
Sijos Masi, nagu lokui.
Thank you, Senator Tategui. Senator Joanne Brown, you're acknowledged at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Speaker, and certainly thank you to Mr. Sepeda for his desire and willingness to serve. I have to tell you, it's always something to hear our language. I'm not a fluent speaker either, but I think I have a fairly good comprehension. And I do find with our language that sometimes it's more direct and clear with the issues that you brought up and the fact that you certainly want to bring life back to the library. I guess awaken the library again, because it's been asleep for a while, part of its covid. But also, you know, we don't see as much activity with the library perhaps as we did when we were growing up. Now that, you know, we have computers and iPhones and all this other stuff, you know, You know, people, including children, have different ways of getting information. And they kind of, we've kind of moved away from the physical plant of the library. But yet, the physical space of that library, you know, there are a lot of advantages that I think our, our young people need to take, take advantage of and experience. So I certainly look forward to the work that you want to do with our library and other things with the Guam Museum. And someone at your age to hear you have the level of fluency that you do with our language is a very good thing. I think it, it gives us hope for the future, that we can have more young people like you that not just have it in our ability to speak, because certainly, if you have it in your heart, it comes out with what you say and in your words. And I really appreciate that, and I certainly look forward to, to the work. I don't really have any questions. I think you're very direct with what you had to say of what you want to do. And I think we are very supportive of that. So I wish you very well with your nomination and keep doing the good things you're doing also to promote our island and our culture, because it's the generations yet to come that I think have so much to learn. I mean, we grew up at a time when our grandparents and parents were able to expose us to what it meant to be Chamorral, what it meant to appreciate our island and our people. And that was lost for some time. So I certainly look forward to seeing what you're going to continue to contribute to our community, particularly to those, as I mentioned, that, that are coming behind us, that, you know, are going to pave the way for a better future and a better respect and appreciation of our Chamorral culture and Chamorral language. So thank you very much, Mr. Sepeda, for your, your community support and your interest in wanting to serve your people. And with that, thank you very much, Madam Vice Speaker, for the opportunity to provide some comments on Mr. Sepeda's nomination.
Sidos Masi, Senator Brown, and yes, yes, definitely, Senator Taitigui. Give both appointees a round of applause for truly stepping up to the plate to be a part of the representation in the different boards that you're being appointed to. And you definitely have my support and my commitment on this. I will definitely expedite the reports to get it ready for the upcoming session here in March. And with no other questions or comments coming from those that have zoomed in this afternoon, sidos masi, todes hamzu. If there's no one left to testify, the public hearing on the appointment of Catherine T. E. Titanow to serve as a member of the Government Classified Service Representative Government of Guam Retirement Fund Board of Directors, and the appointment of Jeremy N. C. Sepeda to serve as a member General Public Representative Guam Public Library Systems Board of Directors has been duly heard. And before I adjourn, I will like to note for the listening audience, individuals who wish to submit testimony, will have the next week or so before we head into session to submit written testimony. Again, they can do it by sending it to senatorsmunyabarnes@guamelaboration.org, or you can hand-deliver it to 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatnya Guam, 96910. And it is now 4:33 in the afternoon. Again, extending my undunkle in the sidos masi for the two appointments. And, and note for the record that both appointments have been publicly heard. We are now in reset, I mean, adjournment. Sidos masi and sidos and bini DC, hamzulotos. Thank you very much for showing up this afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.